We're happy to welcome Michael Hudak and Maria LaRico. Do I have that right?
Maria LaRico, correct.
Candidates for the Deerfield Beach City Commission District One seat in the March 14th city election. We really appreciate you both participating and showing up. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Let's begin with you, Maria. I wanted to ask you to tell us a little bit about yourself, but with specificity, if you can, tell us exactly why you're running for this office.
Hi, Steve. That's a great question. I love Deerfield Beach. I care about my residents. And I want to represent my residents and neighbors.
Okay. How long have you lived in Deerfield Beach?
So I had my son here in 1993, and I've been a resident ever since.
Okay. Do you live in, do you own a home? Do you live in a homesteaded property there?
I'm in a residence, correct.
No, I asked you if you own a home, I said.
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right. And, and tell us about your, your level of experience and familiarity with Deerfield Beach city government. That is, have you been, have you been to city commission meetings? Have you served on a city advisory board? Those kinds of things. Have you been active in someone else's campaign?
So for all my life, I've been very active in the homeless changing lives here in town. And I've done a lot of auxiliary with the Women's League of Voters, Get Out the Vote, environmental issues. I care very much about the community and I serve the community and my church.
Okay. And generally speaking, what would you say about, what would be your general assessment about the competency, the level of responsiveness? How, how well is city government working in Deerfield Beach for you personally?
That's a quasi-answer. That's what initiated me to step up and get involved.
What specifically?
Well, speaking with the residents, there's a lot of traffic congestion. And I hope to be able to represent the residents and their concerns.
Okay. In, in, in checking out the available public records about you, and as we do with all candidates, you are a, you are the registered agent for a company called Sky Funding Group LLC. Tell us what kind of a company that is.
Sure, I'd love to. So it's a private equity firm.
Okay. And how long has it been in business?
Oh, we just recently started that last year.
Okay. How long have you been voting in the city of Deerfield Beach?
So I believe on and off intermittently, but within the last three years.
Okay. Do you recall voting both in primary and general and municipal elections? As you know, there are sometimes as many as three or four opportunities a year to vote in your community. Have you voted in municipal elections in the past?
I've always kept myself very aware of all the candidates. And I really cannot recall.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's great to be kept aware of candidates. I, I wanted to try again. I wanted to ask if you remember voting in a municipal election in Deerfield Beach?
So again, voting is something that I believe is, is very important. And I can't recall, but this is very important to me. And I think that's private.
I'm sorry, what's private?
My personal voting.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify that, particularly for viewers who may be watching. Certainly, it's private how you vote. That's none of my business or anyone else's. But whether you vote is a matter of public record in Florida. That is, whether you've, whether you've voted in an election or not. I bring the question up because you're asking and expecting people in Deerfield Beach to come out and vote for you on March 14th. So I think it's a logical question to ask, you know, have you voted for city candidates in the past? And your answer is you can't recall. So. Let me, let me ask Michael Hudak to join the conversation. Michael, tell us a little bit about your service to the city of Deerfield Beach and why you're running for reelection.
Thank you, Steve. I really appreciate it. My service to the city of Deerfield Beach, I've been a homesteaded resident in Deerfield Beach since 1997. I started with the CERT and the COP organizations back in 2011. I've been a member of the Chamber of Commerce where I was on the board since 2013. I have been a member of the, I was a charter member of the Deerfield Beach Economic Development Council. And that was, I want to say 2017, 18, when that organization started. So I've been, I've been part of Kiwanis. I've also been with Rotary, both of those organizations since 2017, 2018 timeframe. I'm very involved in our community. Not only have I lived in our community, I have raised my five children in our community. I've been in my current residence since 2001. One of the reasons why I went into public office is because in November of 2018, Thanksgiving Day of, of 2018, my home flooded. Ever since I've been in the house, whenever we had a significant rain, the street in front of our house would flood, but it never got into the house. Well, on Thanksgiving Day, it actually got into the house. And then two, three weeks later, two homes across the street from me were robbed. They sold all the Christmas presents and all of that. And I was at a Chamber of Commerce meeting and, you know, explaining my frustrations with regards to that. And so happens at the Chamber of Commerce meeting was our current commissioner who was being termed out. And he explained to me, you know, some of the things that I could do as a commissioner in order to resolve some of those issues. And that's the reason why I decided to initially run for office back in 2019. I had worked with the city staff. What I had determined, the reason why the street flooded by my house was because there was one drain for the entire neighborhood. And when all of the leaves covered that drain, the water filled up. So that every time there was a significant rain after that, myself and my son were going down to the drain, cleaning it out so that our neighbors didn't get flooded. And then I also worked with a gentleman by the name of Tom Good, who was the Assistant City Manager at the time. And we developed a cap to go over this storm drain to try to, you know, reduce the, or increase, I guess, the sides and the top so that the, the clog would be a lot less.
Thank you. All right. That, let me just interject. That flooding you described on Thanksgiving Day 2018, has that, has the city, has that, is that flooding problem resolved?
I'm glad you asked that because one of the first things I did when I got into office, I was able to get a, an infrastructure plan approved, and they actually increased the drainage from one to five. So yes, we have resolved that, that issue. We do have another issue on Southeast 8th Avenue that I'm working with the city right now. I'm the champion for that. We have a stormwater master plan. And that project is going to cost $2.4 million, and it's the number one project on that storm master plan. And I'm the champion for that, to make sure that it stays there. Because flooding in, I want to say 2022, 2022, I want to say it was 20, maybe even 2021, we had another bad storm. And it was around Thanksgiving time and all. And we, 8th Avenue flooded. And it flooded really, really bad to the point where we had a couple who had just purchased their home in September and had a new baby. They had to pass the baby out of the window in order to get out of the house. That's how bad it was. And what we found out was, well, first of all, Southeast 8th Avenue is the lowest part of the city. And it's kind of like a street light. You've got all of this storm water going towards the intercoastal in order to get out. And the water on 8th Avenue can't move until all that other water is gone. So even though it was up about three and a half feet, as soon as the other water went, within a half hour, all that water was gone. So we're working on a plan in order to correct that issue. That's one of the reasons why I want to continue as a city commissioner, because there are a lot of projects that I'm working on, and I want to see through to fruition.
All right. I don't mean to be interrupting or interjecting. I want, that's all right. I want to keep the conversation moving, but I want to be respectful to both candidates. You mentioned at the outset of your comments, you were involved with CERT and COP in 2011. Tell us what those acronyms mean.
Sure. CERT is the Citizens Emergency Response Team, and that's affiliated with the Fire Department. So if there is an emergency, citizens can band together. We've been trained to go in and assist the Fire Department. COP, which is Citizens on Patrol, is an auxiliary of the Police Department. So we have actual units. We can go out. We can help with parking enforcement. When you have special city events, you'll see COP individuals out there directing traffic. My wife and I are actually involved in that one as well. So we supplement the police to help the community with our specific events.
There is a, there is a statement you can find in Florida statutes and maybe in the Florida Constitution as well. It goes back to the days of when Ruben Askew was governor, when we got stricter ethics laws in the 1970s. And it's a very simple declarative statement. It says, and I quote, "A public office is a public trust." And what does that mean? What do those words mean to you?
What, what I have always relayed and I've always projected is that that seat is not mine, where I sit on the dais. That is our communities. Those are the residents. My job is to represent them. Whether they vote for me or not, they're still residents of our community. And it's vitally important that, you know, I remember that. Because, you know, in five years, no matter what happens in this election, I'm not going to be on the dais. So the decisions I make are not for my own personal political gain. The decisions I make are to ensure that the city is, is substantial, is, you know, the infrastructure is there, that the city, that I leave the city in a better place than when I took office. So, you know, you'll see some of my voting. Yeah, did I have to vote to increase the fire assessment fund? Did I have to vote to increase the storm drainage fund? Yes, I had to do that. Do I like in, you know, increasing my own taxes? No, I don't. But the votes that I have today, I know in five years, my garbage is going to get picked up two days a week. I know I'm going to have clean drinking water, you know. I know that my house isn't going to flood. And, and so that's what it means to me is, the seat is not mine. The seat is District One's.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Dan. You want to interject something there?
Just a, real quick, I had a follow-up. You said a commissioner, a commissioner encouraged you to run when you first ran four years ago. Which commissioner was that?
That was Joe Miller. He had been in office for 10 years, and he was termed out. And he, you know, supported me in my first election, and I've had a lot of communications with him.
You, you ran for his seat when he was turned out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know, we asked, we asked Ms. LaRico about, about her business. I wanted to do the same for you. What is Hudak Enterprises Incorporated?
Sure. My wife and I own a dry cleaner in the city of Boca Raton. So it's in the Polo Club shops. Your office is near there, and you want to come on in, come on in. You'll see my wife. She's there Monday through Friday. I work there on Saturdays. I'm also.
I, I think I may have actually already come in there at some point.
I appreciate it. I'm also the Director of Human Resources for a company, for a law firm, Steiner Green and Finer.
Ah, with TV commercials?
Yes, sir.
You don't have anything, you don't have anything to do with those billboards on the turnpike, do you?
I do not have anything to do with those billboards on the turnpike. I can tell you that earlier, I want to say in 2022, there was a proposal to put an electronic billboard out on Sawgrass. And I was very much for that, for the sole reason that there are dilapidated billboards all along Dixie Highway in District One. And the only way I can get rid of those billboards in District One is to approve the electronic billboard out in District Four. One of my other commissioners had huge public support in against that electronic billboard out in District Four. And on the dais, you know, he made a point that there may be other ways in order to remove the billboards in District One through unsafe structures and, and those types of boards. So I've allowed him an opportunity to see if we can, so I voted against the, the digital billboard out in District Four in the hopes that we can find another avenue in order to remove the, the billboards that have been there since the early 80s in District One. So we're still in that process. I don't know how well it's going, but we'll see what we can.
Okay. Very quickly, and I'm sorry, we're getting to the weeds here on something, but, but I want to ask, why is the, why is the removal of dilapidated billboards on Dixie Highway conditional on approving the electronic billboard on the Sawgrass Expressway? Why?
Sure. That is a federal, and I don't know the billboard lobbyists or, or what their organization is, but that is the only way that you, us as a city, is allowed to remove current billboards. Is we have to approve the direction of another one.
Because they're grandfathered in somehow.
Yes, correct, sir.
Okay. Okay. Let me turn back to Maria. Oh, Dan, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I, I actually was, was going to do the same. So, so you.
Maria, two or three days after Christmas, something very jolting, very sad, profoundly sad and difficult happened in the city of Deerfield Beach regarding a young man named Ricky Ferguson. Tell us what happened to Ricky Ferguson.
So if you're referring to the gentleman that entered the park, District Two, and was fatally shot?
Correct. Yep. I guess I'm asking, the broader question I'm asking is what your reaction was to that? What, what, if anything, should the city, the city of Deerfield Beach do or be doing to address what happened at that park to Ricky Ferguson?
So one of the things I feel very strongly with Steve is safety. And when someone enters a park, as citizens, we go there for enjoyment. And it's very difficult when we're breached. And it's a breach. It's a breach of our safety. Again, I think the, the common answer that you probably expect me to say is to beef up on enforcement. I don't know. I think we do a great job. I don't know how we can prevent something like that. I do support community safety, and I will, that would always be my very first interest to accomplishing.
Would you be in favor, for example, of spending more money, that is, more local tax money, to increase and improve safety, lighting, other safety features at all the community parks in Deerfield Beach?
If that's what the residents are showing me, that, that they want, they'll indicate that. But I serve the residents.
Michael, tell us about the Ricky Ferguson tragedy and what, what you've, what you and the city are doing about it.
You know, not only was that a tragedy, but during his wake, there's a shooting as well, a drive-by shooting. Fortunately, there were injuries. You know, that high school has seen a lot of tragedy in the last couple of years. Ricky Ferguson was on the football teams, quarterback of the football team. We had a student there commit suicide with the Bright Line train. And then we had his close friend also commit suicide by the Bright Line train. It, it's a tragedy. Mental health is, is, is a challenge for our youth. You know, we've done a lot in the city, especially for, for the, for the African-American community that is in District Two. We've got, you know, Deerfield Cares is, is an organization that I support. Joel Smith has run that. And, and, you know, and that kind of helps the, the youth try to get over some of these challenges. A lot of these kids, you know, they, they live inside of a phone. They don't have the social skills that I had growing up, or my parents had grown up. And they don't know how to deal with conflict. They, they, you know, in that phone, on that Google, whatever idea you have, you can find complete and 100% supportive. Whether you think the earth is flat or, yeah, whatever the case may be. And when you get to the point where, where you completely don't understand that there are people that have opposing views, all of a sudden, you turn to guns. It's a 14-year-old kid that, that, that shot a 16-year-old kid. So there are deeper issues than just putting lights in a park or beefing up police. We've got to get to these kids with a variety of organizations. We've, we've got a brand-new Tigne Center that's going to go up, that has the, the police substation in there, right at that park. It's a $10 million investment in that area that the city is, is going to be starting in 2023. You know, it's, I wish I had a, you know, a, a magic pill to, to solve the solution, but it's not just Deerfield Beach. I mean, you can look in Parkland and see what happened right before I got into office. So it's all walks of life. It's, you know, you see what's happened in California the last couple of days. This is just, it's a challenge that our country faces. It's not just Deerfield Beach.
Okay. All right. Has Deerfield, for you, Michael Hudak, has Deerfield Beach pursuant to an act, act by the Florida Legislature, have you passed an ordinance prohibiting smoking in, on city beaches and in city parks?
Yes, sir, we have. We did that, it was either late 2022 or early 2023. It must have been late 2022. Yes, we did that for our, our beaches as well as all of our parks. There was some debate back and forth whether we should find a, a smoke-safe zone or something like that. But at the end of the day, you know, my opinion was supported in that we ban smoking beachwide as well as our, as well as in our parks. I also, early on, and when I was on the dais, passed legislation to ban plastic straws on the beach and in District, in District One. So I'm excited, you know, and I'm pleased about that. Other things that I've done, I've made the lease tern, our city bird. When the pandemic had happened, as you know, the beaches were closed. And native birds returned to our beaches. So if residents remember, when the beaches were finally open, there were areas that were blocked off to protect this one bird that actually came back to Deerfield Beach to nest. And we use that as an opportunity to make the lease tern, our official state bird.
What, what, what kind of a tern is that?
It's called a lease tern. That's the name of the bird. It's like, it's, it's, God, it's this big.
Spell it.
I want to say it's L-E-A-S. I'll have to look that up.
Okay, lease tern. Okay.
Yes, lease tern. It's, it's a little migratory bird. So it's.
And you had, and to back up, back up a step, you have adopted an ordinance to ban single-use plastic straws on your beaches?
Yes, sir. I proposed it, and our commission passed it.
Maria, had you been on the city commission, would you, would you have voted for these changes? That is, to ban smoking on city beaches and to ban the use of plastic straws on city beaches?
So, Steve, I'd be very cautious on those, those kind of encumbrances. However, walking the beach this past weekend, I went underneath the pier to speak with some, some people that were enjoying a very beautiful day. And we had many participants also in a beach cleanup where we were picking up bottle caps and cigarette butts. And as I spoke with this female, and she was with her, I will assume, partner, I introduced myself in that I was running for commissioner, and she lit up a cigarette. And as though, you know, there was no confinement, no, no edict. So I didn't say anything. I didn't want her to feel uncomfortable. But the policies that are there, I guess, are being neglected.
So that's a good point. Michael, what about, you're, you're, you've been, Deerfield's been a BSO community for a long time, right?
Yes, sir. We are the longest BSO contract that BSO has.
Okay. So Broward Sheriff's deputies are responsible for enforcing this smoking ban, right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
And we also have park rangers there as well that are, that are, that are under the CRA.
Okay. Let me stay with, with Maria for a moment. I, I guess, I asked about the, you said you'd be cautious about encumbrances with personal behavior on the beach. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm looking for an example, or more than one example. If you can tell us where Mr. Hudak voted for something or voted against something as a Deerfield Beach Commissioner, and you definitely would have voted the opposite way. An issue that you disagree with his actions on, if you can think of one.
So, Steve, if you know me as a person, I always like to keep it positive. So respectfully, I won't answer that, won't dignify that.
Okay. Dan, question?
Yeah. Hold on here. Yeah. You, you did put on your questionnaire, though, Maria, that when we asked, let me bring up your questionnaire to make sure I get it right. Yeah, we, we asked, what factor most distinguishes you from your opponent and why? And the first thing you said is the status quo is not acceptable. Now, without, you know, being harsh on your opponent or anything, I can understand that. You said the status quo is not acceptable. So I guess the question I would ask is, what about the status quo is not acceptable to you?
I think Mr. Hudak spoke about drainage. I was in that area, and I met with the residents. And they are still affected with the drainage issue, to the point where it's a whole entire street of residents. In addition to that, cars from the school are turning around in their neighborhood. And traffic congestion is another very big, I'll just segue right into that, concern. And we're getting a lot of congestion that residents can't commute to and from work. And I put my residents first, and I always want to maintain that any, anything that we do going forward doesn't put them at a disadvantage.
Okay. I want to ask something entirely different. You mentioned on your questionnaire as well that you, you've written a book. What's your, what's your book about?
Thank you. Thank you for asking. It's one of my favorite topics. It's called Labels Belong Uncharted. And it's a political view. While taking care of my dad, I, he was suffering from cancer. So we had many chemotherapy trips to the hospital. And I used that time to spend with my dad and penned a book that really incorporates paradigms that we all incorporate through, through the years. So basically, it's the time in which I was born and how those political influences and our environment. And I basically used a psychotherapy analysis with my political science background. And they merged quite well, along with my business acumen over, since opening. over since opening the ballroom in, right out of college. So I've been blessed with, with knowing the business paradigm, the environmental, social structures. And I combined those and, and wrote that book. And the influences that politics play on, on, on people. Ideas.
Okay. The, the, I, I want to nail down your residency. You said you lived here since 93. Is that full-time?
So from, I originally lived in Hillsborough Beach. And then I found this home here in Deerfield, in the Cove area. And I raised my son here. And then I had to go back to Connecticut where my parents, my grandparents' family were, fell ill. And at this point where I was able to come back to the place that I envisioned I'd spend my entire life, I have.
Okay. I, I, I asked specifically because the book published in 2020 says that, you know, a couple of the lines in the intro are, I'm Maria LaRico, 55-year-old woman. I live in New Haven, Connecticut. So this was at the time that you had to move back there, you're saying?
Of course.
Okay. And the, the place you have now, when did you, when did you buy the, the place in Deerfield?
Oh, my gosh, it was so long ago. So I would have to say when my son was born, 94?
Okay. The, the property appraiser's office lists LaRico's for that residence, but I believe it's your parents' names. Did they, did they buy, buy it and you went in with them or how'd that work?
Oh, well, I'm not at liberty to discuss that. I come from a law family. And I think my brothers would not want that disclosed.
Okay. Steve, that's all I have for now.
Okay. Maria, as a candidate, I just want to ask you a general question. You're aware that, you know, that you have, you're required as a candidate for office, you're required to disclose your sources of income. Your voting history is public. Whether you own property is public. Whether you take the homestead exemption is public. Are you comfortable with all those requirements in Florida?
I think I'm a very transparent person, so of course.
Okay. Michael, we want to help voters in Deerfield Beach make informed decisions. And there is a referendum question on your ballot on March 14th.
There is.
That deals with the, looks like the disposition of some surplus city-owned property. Am I right?
That's correct, sir. You're very, very correct.
First of all, I, that doesn't, that doesn't get on the ballot unless the City Commission votes to put it there. So explain what that issue is about briefly and, you know, how people should, in your opinion, how should people vote on it?
Sure. So the, the city of Deerfield Beach lent that, that, that property to Deerfield Beach Research, I'm sorry, FAU Research Center, FARTA. And for years, they had attempted supposedly to find a developer for that property. In 2000, I'm going to say 2020, the agreement was up. So the city of Deerfield Beach was allowed to take the property again. FARTA came in and begged us, please, give us another year. We'll find a buyer for it. We'll develop the land because it's been undeveloped land for the whole time. So we extended the agreement. Well, in 2022, they still hadn't developed the land. We actually, so the city made a decision that we're going to take the land back and we're going to go ahead and try to sell it, develop it and sell it to a developer. We actually had an agreement with People's Trust. People's Trust wanted to purchase the property for around $3 or $4 million. I was for that sale. I thought People's Trust has been a, a good partner to the city of Deerfield Beach. I, I know George Schaefer, who is the, the president and owner of People's Trust. And I was excited about that opportunity. But the commission voted to not sell the property to Mr. Schaefer, but to go ahead and look for outside sources. So we did that. And now we have found an outside source. And I'm not too proud to say that the source we found, the price has gone from $3 million up to $7 million. So the city is, is potentially going to make out far better than if we were to have gone for the People's Trust property. So very excited. So there is a referendum in the city that any property that is worth over $750,000, the city can't sell. It has to go to the voters to make a decision on whether or not we can sell the property to this specific entity. I am in favor of that sale. The, the plans that have been presented to the city for the development of that property is very impressive. They have not revealed who the tenants would be, but it would be a mixed-use property that also included a medical facility and a hotel as, as well as some properties. So, you know, my vision is it's a Ronald McDonald House or a Schreiner's or some kind of a hospital for, 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 that includes apartments for families. That's just my guess, but I have no insight.
It's about, give or take, it's about four acres of land, right?
That's correct.
Describe where it is.
Also additional development in the park across the street.
Describe where it is in relation to Federal Highway.
Okay. It is, it's, it's west of Federal Highway. So it's basically, it is Southwest 10th Street and I-95.
Okay.
So it's in District Four.
Southwest 10th Street, we know that well.
Do know that well.
I watched, I watched your last, I got a couple of questions. I watched the last City Commission meeting. I think it was the last commission meeting. And for, for those not very familiar, and you'll maybe clarify for me. I'd like to hear from Maria on this as well. Going back 30, 35 years, when they built the Sawgrass Expressway, the folks at Century Village in Deerfield Beach were very concerned about traffic and the traffic impacts. And so there's never been a clean connection between the end of the Sawgrass and Interstate 95 in Hills, in Deerfield Beach. But where do things stand today, Michael? Is the Southwest 10th Connector, is it on the drawing board? Is it going to be built?
I believe it's going to be built. You know, we, we, the design of that connector has changed tremendously in the four years that I've been in office. You know, at one point, it was going to go underground and they were going to have pumps to make sure it stays, you know, dry and all that. And I wasn't for that design. It almost looked like FDOT was going to use Deerfield Beach as an experiment. They're going to get all their engineers there. They're going to throw it all together and see what works. And, and, and I was not for that design. You know, the concern is with the residents in Waterways and Independence Bay because they didn't want to fly over in front of their entrance. So they have moved the flyover away from the entrance. So we are working with FDOT. And it's been a 10-year process, maybe even longer, that we've been working with FDOT in order to get that design for a win-win situation. We've also just approved a, a, a water pipe for, for, for nonpotable water to be built when they do that construction to save the city of Deerfield Beach money as well. Reuse water for the, the vegetation that's going to go along this, this highway. So I do see it being built. The design has changed tremendously, thanks to the efforts of Todd Drofsky, Bill Gans, and those that have been involved over the long haul. Like I said, they, they have been knee-deep in the, the pushback to the MPO for over 10 years.
Have you personally, have you voted for the latest design for this project?
I have, I don't remember anything coming before the commission with regards to the latest design.
At your, at your, at your, at your last meeting, there was a lengthy presentation by someone. Maybe I've got your meetings messed up, but I watched it on video. A young lady, a young woman gave, had all sorts of whiz-bang graphics and lots of things.
Right, that's correct. That's the, the latest iteration. Right. But I don't remember if there was a commission vote on the actual design or not.
Okay.
If it, if it was a presentation, I don't remember if there was a commission vote on the actual design. I believe it was just a presentation. If there was a vote on the actual design, again, I'd have to research to find out what I voted, but more than likely, I would have voted for it.
I'd like to ask Maria a question about the same thing. There are very few issues that have had the staying power in the city of Deerfield Beach of the Southwest 10th Connector. I can't, I can't think of anything. In fact, I can't think of anything in Broward County, actually. I, like a lot of reports of my generation, I knew Trinchy Trinchatella very well. Trinchy was the leader of the opposition. But Maria, I wanted to ask you, is this the right way to go? Is it, is it the right thing for the people of Deerfield to build a Southwest 10th Connector?
So Steve, your research and your, your knowledge, the time that you've taken to prepare these questions, they're so vital to what we're being faced with and what I consider status quo. That, the purple pipe, the pink pipe, it has gotten resolved. And it's a, it's a fiscal responsibility impact that we have to be very delicate with. But there are the districts, I believe, the purple pipes up in District Four, which is our Todd Drofsky area. So I know we'll do the right thing. The sale of a property that you refer to, it comes to residents first. Everyone that I've spoken to is very excited about getting some new retail space here. And they believe it will be aesthetically pleasing. And the developers think to have done other projects that have brought a benefit to the, those areas as well.
Explain to us what you're referring to when you talk about the purple pipe. What, what, tell me what you're referring to there.
So there were two issues that, that were brought up. You were speaking about the, the 10th Street. And then there's also a purple pipe for the water irrigation.
Right. Okay, all right. Okay. When is the last, Maria, when is the last time you went to a City Commission meeting?
This past Tuesday.
What, 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 what impressions did you have? What?
So Steve, let me just tell you a little bit more about speaking with the residents. They're, they're not being informed of what a commissioner does. I get a lot of questions. So when I go to those commission meetings, I know those people are showing up because they're aware of how the, the commissioners interest and engage and try to advocate for the residents. But I hope speaking with everybody has brought that kind of light and participation where everybody will feel more engaged. And I wholeheartedly want to continue always to meet my residents and put them first.
Okay. Michael, at the last City Commission meeting I watched in Deerfield Beach, at the very end of the meeting, Mayor Bill Gans brought up an issue of traffic enforcement and of speeding citations in Deerfield Beach, if I recall correctly, over the holidays. BSO had a traffic enforcement team. Anyway, to make a long story short, they had similar traffic enforcement efforts in places like Tamarack, Oakland Park, Coral Springs. But the citations in Deerfield Beach were dramatically higher in number than those other communities. In some cases, bigger communities than yours had fewer citations. I've got that pretty correct, don't I? My description of what?
You, you do. It was, I want to say the number was 741 citations.
What's, what's, what's going on?
They're all speeding tickets. And again, the city doesn't reap any benefits by the BSO writing city, writing tickets. None of that comes back to the actual city. Traffic speeding has been a huge issue in the city of Deerfield Beach. We have, in, in the Cove area, you know, we, we have put a lot of traffic calming devices in all of our neighborhoods. We have the speed bumps. And if a neighbor wants a speed bump on their street, we have a, a process in place where they fill out a form. They get their neighbors on their street to agree that, yeah, we want a speed bump. And the city will actually put a speed bump to try to control the, the speeding in the, the neighborhoods. But speeding along, along Hillsborough Boulevard, Southwest 10th Street is a continuous challenge. And it's not just Deerfield Beach. It's, it's all over. You go on 95 and you're going 70 miles an hour, which is five miles over the speed limit and people are zooming past you. So yes, there were 741 tickets in Deerfield Beach. Not all of them were speeding. There's a variety of reasons for that enforcement. But, you know, our residents do continually call, you know? And so we're going to do what we can to try and educate, you know, the drivers in Deerfield Beach that you have to abide by the law, you know? Whether it's during the school zone, whether it's 3 o'clock in the morning on federal highway. You know, traffic enforcement is, you know, we're trying to change habits. It, it's, and again, the city doesn't get any of that revenue. So don't think, well, you know, the city of Deerfield Beach wrote 741 tickets so that we can buy a new cop car. It, it, it doesn't work that way in Deerfield Beach.
Okay.
So Steve, if I can interject.
Sure.
I'm a longtime barber here in the Cove, who's always remained your dear friend. I used to bring my son, from a little boy, he would cut his hair. And I stopped in just the other day and to a woman who's been selling dresses here for as long as I can remember. And they're finding that because of their business owners and they live in other towns, communities, that the Cove shopping center, when their residents are going there as patrons to their businesses, they're coming out with tickets on their cars. And it's just not getting addressed. There was a pole that had been ran over and it's leaning, a metal pole. And no one's addressed it. And the storefront owners are irate and have called to, they feel that they're the low man on the totem pole. And that because they, they, they live elsewhere, that they're not being addressed. The issue, all these issues that are in the Cove parking lot are not being addressed. As far as the, the slowing down speeding, I, I've heard from a lot of residents that it's impacting the bottom of their cars. You know, even at a low speed, we don't all have the best shops. We don't have all the best cars. And we can't expect everybody to be in, you know, an elevated car to go over speed bumps. And we're not taking into account how that affects the damage that it does on cars.
Are you saying that the speed bumps or traffic calming devices are not a good thing?
We, I'm going to say, if you talk to the residents, that it's having a damaging effect on the bottom of their cars.
Michael, have you heard from constituents who are worried about track, speed bumps damaging their vehicles?
I, I have not heard. But I can tell you, if you go over a speed bump at the proper speed, it will not damage the bottom of your car. So maybe that, that's doing what. Um, so maybe that, that's doing what, I, I don't think individuals should have damage to the bottom of the cars. But again, the residents are the ones who made the decision on those roads. Hey, I would like a speed bump because of the, the, the traffic going through. So whether you have a child who's playing in the yard or you just have someone who wants to enjoy their front yard, they have come to City Hall because they're frustrated enough of speeding cars that they've asked to have a speed bump. Um, you know, placed, you know, in, in their road. Uh, with regards to the Cove parking, that is a challenge. Um, and the reason why there is a time limit on the parking is because of the number of individuals who park in the Cove and then walk to the beach and spend all day there. So those, those businesses don't have the parking spaces anymore. Um, so it is a delicate balance. Um,
What about, what about Maria's other point about a compromised metal pole in the parking lot? And the city's done nothing about it, which is what I heard, I think.
Uh, I would have to look into that. I, I am not aware of that specific pole. Uh, if it is the city's responsibility, I will make sure it's taken care of. Uh, I'm not sure which pole that is, but I do know as, you know, I drive around, if I see things, I let the city manager know. There are certain things that are not the city's responsibility, but we have to get FDOT. You know, there was a challenge with the lights being out on, uh, from, on Southwest 10th Street from Federal Highway all the way to the beach. And what we found was that individuals were stealing the conduit. They lay the conduit in order to power up the lights. At night, people would come and steal the conduit. You know, years ago, it was they were stealing it out of air conditioning units. Now they're stealing it out of these, these lines that we lay in order to power our streets or the streetlights. Uh, what we did three years ago, two years ago, is we, uh, changed the lights from incandescent lights to digital lighting. So they're a lot brighter, they're a lot wider. Um, 99.9% of the residents love it. Um, you know, especially in District One, down by the beach, um, where you can put them, where it's turtle safe. Um, it, it can be, there can be dark spaces and those residents, a lot of them are a little older. So their eyes don't work as well as they used to, but they still want to walk and enjoy. So the, the lights are a lot brighter. Um, and it's, it's, it's really helped out neighborhoods. There are some neighbors that complain that they're too bright. And what we have is we have a filter that we can put on the light that directs it from your house. If you have the, the light shining into your bedroom or your, your front yard or whatever the case may be. So we've tried to do everything we can, uh, to help the residents with regards to the lighting. Um, as, as far as if there is a pole down in the Cove parking lot, um, I will have staff research that, uh, and get that addressed as, as expeditiously as possible.
Back, back to the speeding and its traffic infractions, just for one second, uh, as you said, you know, we're, we're, um, the city does not derive any revenue from all these citations. That's not how it works. Uh, but when this was discussed at the last city commission meeting, Mayor Bill Gans made an, uh, a, uh, an illusion, uh, a reference to, I'm paraphrasing what I heard him say. He wouldn't mind it if Deerfield Beach would become another Hacienda Village. He's, he's, I've heard him say that. Hacienda Village no longer exists, but it was a notorious speed trap in the middle of Broward County. So you're not, you're not, you know, you're not suggesting that Deerfield Beach have speed traps, right?
That's correct. I'm not suggesting Deerfield Beach has speed traps. Again, Deerfield Beach does not get any revenue from having speed traps. Our whole focus is residential safety. Uh, as you know, Hillsborough Boulevard was changed dramatically by FDOT, you know? Dixie Highway and Hillsborough Boulevard, you go from three lanes to two lanes and you've got a bicycle lane that's in the middle of the road, which is absolutely insane, but there's nothing that we can do about it. The, uh, the bridge at Hillsborough Boulevard, the barrier between where the bicycles can go and where the cars is, is this high uh, and it's unsafe. Um, and then I have argued and fought to try to get that bridge to get the barrier even raised because residents don't feel comfortable. We put signs that say, hey, get off your bike and walk it across the street, uh, uh, you know, across the bridge because it is unsafe. Something seriously is going to happen. People come over that bridge and you think they're in the Dukes of Hazzards. Um, so it's a, it's a, a seriously potentially hazardous area. Um, and I've tried to get the bridge to be redesigned, which is not gonna happen. I've tried to, now my next idea is to at least get that barrier increased so there's a little more safety. Um, we had something over Christmas called the, uh, the Santa Claus Pub crawl. Where they, you know, people walk from one pub to another pub. Well, like I said, the barrier is this tall. You get people who are a little liquored up. You can trip over that barrier and all of a sudden you're laying down flat in Hillsborough Boulevard in the path of a car. So there are some challenges with, you know, the way our streets have been designed. Uh, and one of the ways that we can improve the safety is, is again, is to reduce the speed. I know that we've decreased the, the width of the lanes, um, which has been proven to slow people down. Um, we've had a project over on Northwest, uh, Third Street, which is basically the border between District One and District Two by the hospital where, uh, that street, you can, you, you have the impression that you can go 50, 60, 70 miles an hour from Sample Road to 10th Street and there's no barriers. Well, there was actually a little stop sign at 44th Street that was always covered by a tree that I always had to have city staff cut down, um, and FDOT would do nothing about it. I finally got that stop sign moved to the middle of the road where it actually has lights on it now. And we've actually reduced the lanes from, from two lanes to one and have a center lane for the ambulances because before, when the ambulance had to turn into the hospital, it, traffic would back up and people would try to cut over. So we're doing everything we can, not only in District One, but citywide to improve safety for our residents.
Okay. Just an aside, I was in Pompano not long ago and I had to get to Boca Raton for a meeting. Like everybody in South Florida, I'm running late. I took Dixie. I took Dixie Highway. Dixie Highway was the most efficient, fast road. It's a, I think still a, it's obviously a well-kept secret. This is probably this time of day, I've been in the middle of the day. And during a weekday, there was nobody on that road. Am I right?
And now you're putting it on YouTube. Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, we're, we're, we're coming up to an hour.
Those elaborated, uh, billboards too.
Right. Well, Dixie, the, the, the rehabilitating Dixie, uh, and the appearances along Dixie all through the county is another much longer story.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. We're coming up to the hour and, uh, we respect the demands on your time and we have other, other things as well. But I want to give each of you a chance to make a brief closing statement. Make your best case for why, uh, you deserve to be elected by the voters of Deerfield Beach. And, uh, Maria, we'd like to start with you. Keep your comments to about a minute, minute and a half, please.
Okay, well, Steve, and again, thank you for a wonderful, um, bringing us together. One of the things that I always love to engage in, um, hearing both, uh, Michael and, and myself, uh, address these issues is, um, what needs to occur. But I put my residents first and in putting them first, um, we have to solve the congestion. We have to, um, make sure that everyone feels safe. And residents being the input and the dialogue and the exchange that has to occur, um, always has to come back to the commission and having everyone, um, feeling that it's in the best interest and that that resolve is what the residents, um, are, um, advocating for themselves and that we, again, are presenting for them. So in that, I, I want you to know that I will work diligently with all the other commissioners in the best interest and to put the residents of Deerfield Beach in District One as my number one priority.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for your closing comments. Michael Hughdak, you have the floor, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, for four years, I have put the residents first. I've listened to all of our residents. I've been involved in our community. Um, and that's my job. My job is to listen to our residents and make sure that I hear their concerns and questions. A couple of years ago, there were residents who wanted to allow, uh, Deerfield Beach to, uh, to put boats, park boats in the front of the yard. Um, and I listened to them. I said, well, you know what? You put a petition together. And, um, if that's something that you want to do and that's something the community wants to do, we'll go ahead and now present it to the dius. I also received a call from a numerous residents who says, we don't want to put boats in the front of the yard. I said the same thing. You put a petition together and, you know, you tell me what you want and uh, you know, when you get me your petition, if there's enough there, then I won't bring it up before the, 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 the dius. And lo and behold, the, the petition that wanted boats in the yard was about 15. The petition that didn't was over 250. So the dius never heard it. Uh, my job again is to represent the residents. Um, there is a project that is over on Eller and Federal Highway, um, that is trying to be developed. There's some vacant land there. Um, I spoke with a number of residents and, uh, they are fully, um, uh, against the, that project, the way it is currently designed. Uh, I held a District One meeting with one topic. Um, I had the developer there as well as his representative and we probably had a hundred residents and we just talked about that one project. Um, at the outset of that meeting, the developer pulled their application and is now working with FDOT uh, to look for ways to change Federal Highway as well as looking at changing the design of that property, all because of the residents, you know, and me getting them together with the developer to make something like that happen. So that is, 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 is near and dear to my heart. That's why I became a resident or why I became a commissioner. There are a lot of projects that still need to happen that, um, as a commissioner, I want to make sure um, go through to fruition. We haven't talked about, you know, our storm drainage master plan. We haven't talked about our Sawgrass to Seagrass Educational Center that's gonna be in District One. There are a lot of projects. We, we talked, touched briefly on, uh, the storm drainage issue that is over on Southeast Eighth Avenue. So, uh, you know, I've been a commissioner for four years. I've educated myself on our budget. I've educated myself on the issues, uh, that are near and dear to the residents of District One. And I've been there for them. Uh, I've, you know, some of, a lot of individuals don't know the, the job of a commissioner. And one of the other jobs of a commissioner is to build relationships with county commissioners, build relationships with state representatives, build relationships even at, at the Washington level so that you can get funds. Um, you know, the, the aquatic center has a storm drainage product, um, our program, uh, $750,000. The city hasn't have to pay for it. I was able to get funds in Tallahassee to cover the cost of that. That's another job of a commissioner that people don't understand. Uh, and that's why I want, uh, our residents vote to keep things going forward because it isn't status quo. It's what our residents want.
Okay. Appreciate that very much. Thanks again to both of you for participating today. Best of luck to you both. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Have a great.
Much. That was a wonderful interview.